Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April 10th open session of the North Andover Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM, and I ask you to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we head into licensing, I just want to welcome our newest board member, Brian Roach. So, we're looking forward to working with you. And now, we will head into our first order of business. Oh, is anybody here for public comment? Sorry. Stan is here. We know there's public comment.
Stan Lippert, 43, Stone Cleve Road. I think I sent this in as an email, but I wanted to voice my support for Warren Article 14, the ban on the disposable plastic bags. I don't know if any of you all have had the opportunity to go around during one of our cleanup days in town and try to go walk along our roads and pick up the trash that's there, but half the time, it's about half plastic bags. So, I think this is a much-needed step for us, and it will help our environment. It will help everything about our beautiful community. My second public comment is to thank our two select board members, Ms. Bates and Mr. Roach, for their very respectful campaigns that they ran. They didn't have to put in nearly as much work as they did. They were going to get elected; we knew that. But they really showed us that they really wanted to do these jobs, and I really wanted to express my public appreciation for you making that effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Any other public comments from people who are in the room right now? Okay. I also want to note that we received 40 public comments at last count in favor of that same the plastic bag ban that is on the horizon for our town meeting. So, all of those comments are attached to the meeting notes, so you can check them out. And we received zero at last count that were opposed to this motion, so, okay. Now that we've taken care of public comment, let's move to licensing.
Yeah, right. When should we move into licensing?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are now in licensing, and the item on the agenda for this evening is an application for a renewal of junk dealer license from Robert Holland of 114 Jewelry and Antiques, which is located at 2350 Turnpike Street. Is Mr. Holland with us tonight? No? Okay. So, what we are seeing in our packet, there are favorable recommendations from police, fire, health department, and building inspector with the following conditions, which clearly states none, none, and none. So, with that...
Madam Chair, I'm of approval.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion?
This has been a town for a long time.
Yeah, it's just such an unusual combination of things. Jewelry and antiques and junk dealer license.
Right. My understanding is the only license that fits all of those.
It's the junk dealer. I know, I remember. It just makes me smile sometimes, it's sort of funny. Wheels of government. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote, so I entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
So, move.
Motion made.
A second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is a unanimous vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. We are moving on to our new business. Item A is the public hearing continued from 2/27/23 on the application from AT&amp;T for small cell wireless installation on a utility pole near 477 Stevens Street. From what I understand, there is a request to continue that again till our May 8th, 2023 meeting. They just need more time, so...
Do they have two microphones? I wasn't sure which one. They do have a proposal right now that they're looking at to insert a new pole. They want to meet with the person, the property owner that this would affect before they bring anything else forward. They're not available until the May 8th meeting.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I will move to continue the public hearing for the application from AT&amp;T for small cell wireless facilities near 477 Stevens Street until May 8th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item B will be the first of our citizen petitions. This one presented by Laura Parks, so please feel free to come up and identify yourselves and tell us a little bit about your petition.
Hi, my name is Laura Parks, 1478 Great Pond Road. I did file the bill, but on behalf of my daughter, who wasn't quite old enough, so with that, I'm going to step aside and leave it to her because she is the voice behind it. Thank you.
And it's Article 17, for everybody who's following at home.
Well, hello. My name is Erica Parks, 1478 Great Pond Road. I am currently Miss Boston's Teen, which is a local preliminary title to Miss America, and my community service initiative is Pause For A Cause: Helping Animals in Need, which is why I am presenting the North Andover Humane Pet Shop Ordinance, which, if implanted, would prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, rabbits, and guinea pigs in pet shops. A pet shop may provide space for the display of dogs, cats, rabbits, and guinea pigs for adoption by Public Animal Control Agency, a shelter, or an animal rescue organization. Any pet shop that makes a sale or offers a sale for any of these animals will be in violation of suspicion, and any pet shop that makes provision of space knowingly in violation of suspicion shall be fined $300. This chapter may be enforced by police officers or animal control officers through means available in law or equity. Just to make you all better aware, these animals often come from puppy mills or other mills, very similar. These animals are often in poor conditions, solely produced for sale on the trade market. They focus on quantity over quality, and these animals are more likely to carry infectious diseases, which would then cost the new owners thousands of dollars in vet bill and can also lead to mass outbreak. There are responsible ways to shop that I would like to spread awareness over, such as going through a responsible breeder, and this would also have a lot of positive effects on our town. Specifically, it protects consumers from deceptive marketing practices, purchasing sick animals, it reduces public health risks, promotes humane business models, and prevents negative media attention. Now, to address a few commonly asked questions, why would we need this if North Andover doesn't have any pet shops that would sell dogs, cats, and rabbits? This is mostly preventative measure to prevent pet shops from opening in North Andover to sell these types of animals from commercial breeding facilities, prioritizing profit over the welfare of these animals. As more towns adopt these measures, selling shops are looking to open in towns that don't have these measures already implanted. And these measures communicate to the towns that we care about the welfare of animals and the people who may unintentionally purchase animals from these mills, which are often unhealthy. To address one other thing, there is a pet co in North Andover that may sell guinea pigs. We are waiting on confirmation of that. However, this is a step that we want to take to prevent the overpopulation issue happening in our shelters at the moment. This would not cost a town of North Andover anything to implant, and it would be very similar to the 12 other towns in Massachusetts that have done very similar, such as Boston, Cambridge, Plymouth, and Stonem. And this also allows the residents of North Andover to demonstrate that they not only represent a humane community, but help contribute to the number of local laws that collectively can show support and encourage the state and federal government to act on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Excellent presentation, and excellent. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I mean, I totally agree with dogs, cats, rabbits, and guinea pigs, but I guess my question is, we have a business in town, as you stated, that we're still determining whether they sell guinea pigs. I think they do, but I'm not 100% sure.
They do.
But could we include a provision to grandfather in an existing business that would prevent additional new businesses from coming in? But can we... Because I'm more business-minded as well, and I hate to put a prohibition on an existing business that's doing business, and potentially, this is part of their, you know, their sales model. So, could we make a friendly amendment that we could exclude existing businesses from this, or like for the grandfather clause? Would that be possible?
Yes, I believe that it is possible, however, it is a little bit counterintuitive to it. However, I have been in discussion, and I believe I included something in my citizen's petition about possibly adding an effective date into it to give those existing businesses some amount of time before this bill goes into complete effect.
Okay, not... So that it wouldn't go into effect until January 1st?
Correct.
There's a lot of... I'm not totally versed on it, but I believe there's a lot of guinea pigs that have been given up, given back, right, to the MSPCA, and that's part of it, right?
Correct.
That was part of why Boston implemented this, is because there's a lot of guinea pigs up for adoption, right? I guess my only other question is, is there any reason you didn't... There's other animals that are sold as well? Is there a pet co, right, like hamsters and...
Is birds?
And birds? This won't...
Correct. This would only affect dogs, cats, rabbits, and guinea pigs.
And mammals?
And not the birds, yeah. Okay, so those are all mammals?
Pets, right? Did I miss anything?
No.
Yeah, okay.
The way this bylaw is currently drafted, the provisions will go into effect immediately after the Attorney General approves it, which typically is about four months.
You mentioned there are 12 other towns in Massachusetts that have this. Do you happen to know them off the top of your head?
Yes, I have them listed. Boston, Cambridge, Stonem, Holliston, Pittsfield, Marshfield, North Adams, Plymouth, Springfield, Lexington, Attleboro, and Lenox.
Petco does operate a number of those, too.
So, okay, but they also sell reptiles, I believe, as well, which...
All different kinds of fish.
Yeah. But it's only the ones that you listed?
Yes.
Any other comments?
I just want to say congratulations on bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your advocacy and engagement.
Thank you.
Item C, I will ask Jen Goldman to come up to talk about her citizen petitions, Articles 15 and 16.
Oh, my lucky number. Jen Goldman, 28 Jared Place, North Andover. So, to keep this very simple, the citizen's petition is about moving the town meeting to early June to allow returning college students to vote, and because I am asking in the citizen's petition for that, we also had to adjust the wording in the other article about opening it up again. I also added a Saturday morning as an option to a weekday evening.
May I comment?
Absolutely.
We tried that quite some time ago, and we just didn't seem to get the turnout. I don't know if it's worth trying again, but for whatever reason, we really just didn't get the turnout. The one thing, I mean, the early June would most likely work, but we're shaking heads and all like...
I just, I feel like once early June rolls around, people are leaving for weekends.
You are correct. I was about to say, but we didn't...
They're at tournaments, they're...
Weddings, there's graduations.
Graduations.
And that's why there's flexibility around doing an early June weekday night, which does inconvenience parents of young children that don't want them up till 9:00 or 10:00 with the babysitter. That is nicely offered, which I think is wonderful. So, this is not mandating a Saturday morning. It's more about getting into early June for the returning college students that are of voting age to have the right to vote for things that impact their town.
Just administratively, I'd be happy to do it on a Saturday, but I do have concerns about June, only because of the end of the fiscal year and us closing out. So, yes, sometimes there would not be enough time for us to officially close out our books. Because as we have this year, we do have transfers to the general fund budget for fiscal year 23 that we then have to process. So, just turnaround time, June makes me nervous. Saturdays, I would be happy to try.
It's the flip. Yeah.
It's tough because of sports.
First communions, all kind weddings, all kinds of things seem to... It is, it's tough. We've talked about making changes through the past and always seem to come up with reasons why, maybe we shouldn't.
It would be interesting to see what the attendance went back on. When we did it on Saturdays, that's compared enough, because we don't get great attendance now either, so...
And the demographics, to be honest, age, family size, ages, that, I mean, that does play into it. The town does go through cycles, I'm sure. But more, may I address Melissa for one minute on the cycle? What is the turnaround time? Because I realize, I was thinking about that. When you do get, the budget does get passed, and then doing transfers, what is the usual turnaround time? Is it a five to seven day? And is there a cutoff? Because I thought it was later June, so...
Yeah, no, so it can be, it can be all different. It depends really on the year. So, in a year like this one, where we're making a transfer from the free cash to the general fund, it's more complicated. But even when the budget passes the town meeting, what we have to do on the town side is then create all of the accounts in munis and then update for the next fiscal year and then roll over, which actually is more work than it sounds like, especially because the account numbers often change and there's new amounts need to be inputted. So, it really can take up to a month for Lynn to be able to get all of that done, which is why I think most communities do meet in May.
There's no room for error or things to go wrong.
Ryan, you can't pre-prep all of that work in advance with the positive thinking that budget won't approve.
No, because we don't know what's gonna...
Got it.
Things can, and things can change, actually, kind of right up until we get to town meeting, especially with our forecasting.
But again, with the month, is there a set deadline at the end of June, second week in June, or, I mean, what is the end of the fiscal period?
Our fiscal year ends on June 30th.
Okay.
Our fiscal year ends on June 30th.
So, you're saying about cutting it close?
Yeah, that's why we cut it close.
Yep.
I was just looking, you know, just out of curiosity, so Meramec gets out May 19th. So, I mean, is there like a date in May? Is a later May date more of a compromise than what we do now for that Tuesday?
I mean, I think that Dick has a really good point to look at historically, when it was different dates, what sort of happened, because I think I really appreciate the fact that you are bringing this up, because I think probably every person in this room understands that there are flaws with town meeting. It is exclusive, not everybody has the opportunity to participate, there's, you know, but it is the form of government that we have, and I appreciate wanting to make it easier for everybody to participate. I just personally do not, I see, you're just trading problems for problems, is sort of what I...
Yeah, I think there's pros and cons to everyone, but it's bringing it to the attention, so...
So, yeah, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I agree. It's hard. There's something going on all the time, right?
Exactly.
There's never a good time, right?
That's right.
I wonder, like, now you're getting, you get families that are going out of town for sports.
Tournaments, end of season.
Yeah.
Not immune.
Yeah.
Proms.
So many things.
Absolutely. That's why I'm saying, it's like, I did not go in with Saturday morning.
Yep.
I know how far to push.
Any other comments? Questions for Jim?
I need to change your wording, right? Did we mention that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Just because I think you guys have changed the select board, so we just use that opportunity to update. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, from the Board of Selectman to Select Board. A little cleanup.
Just so everybody's clear, one of these is a bylaw change, and the other one is a charter change. Okay? And that's why there's two articles.
Thank you. Good.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, guys.
Item D is our next citizen petition. I will call Christina Minicucci up, and all of those who came with her.
Sure, if they'll all come, but I am Christina Minicucci, 12 Lavender Circle, here in support of Article 13, the Williams Sims Jr. Act. And so, this article came about, I'm here as the registered voter for these lovely residents here of North Andover, and it came about as part of civics, as part of 8th grade civics class, and they are working through the process of understanding how to bring an article to town meeting, and I think they have a very exciting project in front of them. So, I'm going to turn it over to who's first.
Are you going to start?
It's okay if I speak. I don't live in town.
Thank you all for coming.
Pat McGravy from the North Andover Middle School. Nice to see everyone.
Nice to see you again as well.
Yeah, so...
We were speaking in your venue.
Now roles are reversed. Yeah, now we're, now we're coming to you. You see how you inspired them all in one lesson. So, we, I think it's best if the students just speak. So, I'm just going to have, let each of them kind of chime in answering some questions. So, the first thing that I'm just going to have one person respond is, who is William Sims Jr.? The second thing is, what did he do? The third thing is, what happened to him? And then the last thing, why we're here, is why are we here? If that's okay.
So, would someone like to speak about who you guys... Would you like to speak about who you guys... Say your name.
Oh, yeah. Very interesting. My name is Bindu Pai, 509 Waverly Road. So, William Sims Jr., his father was, his father was a minister of the church, I believe, who owned the Parson Barnard House, and his family was a very, very, very high prestige in Andover, which also included here in North Andover.
No, it actually goes the other way. It's North Andover, and we put it in... A little bit of fun with this conversation.
I meant, that's what I meant to say.
We were first, don't forget.
I know that, like, they split it. I know that Andover was the, yeah, Andover was the, I don't know, I'm assuming. William Sims was the only, William Sims Jr., he was the only lawyer in the entire town, I believe, and he was asked, along with Mr. Osgood and Mr. Kittredge, to attend the Constitutional Convention and vote no on the ratification of the U.S. Constitution. At first, at the Constitution, the Constitutional Convention, my apologies, he made a speech about why it should not be ratified. Until the very next day, John Hancock made a speech and proposed a compromise. Not only will we have a constitution showing our restrictions, we will also have a Bill of Rights that will give the people some more, like, kind of a balance, the best of both worlds, if you may. William Sims was thrilled by this idea. He was thrilled by this idea, and he spoke to Osgood and Kittredge and was like, this is a wonderful idea. If I vote yes, Andover is going to be so pleased when they hear about this. And unfortunately, that did not happen. He voted yes, and in his voting of yes, he broke a deadlock that had been placed in the votes. So, essentially, it depended on him for our current U.S. Constitution to get ratified, and he is now currently the reason that our Constitution is here in place. He was driven out of town for his...
We'll let someone else talk about it.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
You did a great job. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you want to come? Why did the town of Andover/North Andover want him to vote no so badly on that? What was the purpose for that? What was their reasoning?
What we learned in civics... Should I say my name?
Yeah.
So, my name's Keshav Mahadaven, and I reside in 71 Seville Street. So, there were no official records of the town meeting, of the town meeting actually telling him to vote no. They just, it was a general, like, opinion of the public that they shouldn't go and vote no. They were just told to, like, give them their space and have them vote on their own.
And again, we talked about they were worried about, you know, the town maybe losing some of their freedoms being part of it.
Yeah, and the people in the town were also worried about losing some of their freedoms because they thought the Constitution would prevent that, and, yeah.
And now someone's going to talk about what happened to Mr. Sims Jr. when he came home and after the Constitution was ratified in Massachusetts. The three of them came back, and you're going to, oh, we got, we'll have some other people chime in. You want to talk about what happened, and then you two can chime in.
Hi, my name is Michael Lane. I reside in, on 29 Hamilton Road. So, what happened to William Sims after that day? The town frankly, like, was not happy with the decision. They saw it as a betrayal. But if I can give my own opinion, I...
Have at it.
I believe that what William Sims was doing was, he was doing it for the greater sake of our future, because if he had kept his promise and voted no, this, what I personally believe, the Constitution would not have been ratified, and it is found that we could have, if Massachusetts did not vote no, if they voted no, other states would have followed, and we wouldn't have an official government. So, what happened to him was, he told his family, I've got to get out of here. So, they, he had to, the town of Andover ran him out of town, and he had to live in Portland for the rest of his life.
Portland's rather nice now.
I love it, too, there.
We're all Portland. Anyone who wants to quickly chime in on what else? Please, Trudy, Goretta, just say your name.
Hi, my name is Trudy, and I actually disagree with Michael, because I think Andover was absolutely right to be mad at him, because I would be, too, if he, like, made a promise. And so, he voted yes to it, and I think he should have gone with the town, but I guess that's how things turned out. So, yeah.
You understand.
Yeah.
You know, you're both right. You both have good reasoning, reasons to say what you're saying. So, you're both right, and, well, I guess we're glad it happened the way it did, though, but you were right, and he made a promise, and he should have kept it, but it all worked out.
Hi, I'm Haxanka, and I live in 8 Buckland Road. So, after Sims came back, he lost all his work. Nobody used him and hired him to be their lawyer, because they didn't really trust him anymore, because they gave their faith into him voting no, and he just threw that away and voted what he wanted. So, he had to move to Portland, because he'd not be able to do anything, really, because he was scared and he had no work left. So, after moving there, he became a really big lawyer, and everyone there, even though they're more sheeps than people, all the people really liked him, and he became a really big lawyer there. And if you look, he died in the same year as his father, which is kind of sad, because his father died in, like, his 80s while he died around 46, which is pretty sad.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I think, I don't know if any of you have any more questions about Sims? Will we talk about why we're here? I didn't know if anyone had. So, does someone want to talk about why we're here and what we want the, would you like to talk about what the town, what we would like to do in acknowledgement, not an apology, but when we talk about the acknowledgement?
Hi, my name is Mariah. I live in 10 Compass Point. So, why we're here, pretty much, and like, what we want to do is, like, we want to make the town aware, because like, so in the North Andover Middle School, the 6th grade wing is called, like, it's like the Sims Wing, but no one really knows, like, who Sims is, and, like, none of the, not even, like, some of, like, the history teachers, so we kind of just, like, want to make the town aware of, like, what happened and how he got, like, ran out, and we kind of just want to make the town aware, and they can, like, pick their side, and if many people, like, say, like, oh, we shouldn't have done that, then maybe there might be an apology that is let out, but first, we want to make, like, an acknowledgement.
I did not know that about that, the building being named after that gentleman. I guess I never thought about it.
Would you like to say, you know, like, it's important that we acknowledge him? We don't have to...
Just in closing, after this was discussed and after this lesson, my five civics classes, we all kind of had a little bit of a debate and a discussion of whether it should be a formal apology or whether it should be an acknowledgement. And with the consensus of the five classes, including pretty much everyone up here, is that we didn't want an apology, the kids didn't want an apology, they thought that it would be better if it would just be an acknowledgement, almost educating the community as to who Sims was. As the students said, you know, I think every single one of them were 6th graders in the Sims Wing, I think it was the hybrid year, but the kids don't know who Sims is, and I think there was an attempt when the middle school was refurbished in 1996, that maybe that would be a cool opportunity to talk about Sims, and it was a great gesture, but not a lot of follow-through, so I think educating the public and who he is and who he is and So I think educating the public and, and who he is and acknowledging who he is and what he did for, uh, our town.
Alright, so one more thing is that Mr. Sims didn't vote yes for his constitution, we wouldn't have had it. And then our government system would've been in disarray, we wouldn't have had any leadership for our country. And then that would've probably had the British come back to attack us again. And they would've definitely won because we didn't have any central leadership. And then we wouldn't be here and it would, in the history of America, would be really different.
I think you're right with that summation. But you know what's interesting though is that, um, is that I like the fact that you're taking a kind approach to Mr. Sims' memory and, and the things that he did. But I also, I, I also like the fact that you're bringing this to town meeting. And the reason I love town meeting is because the voice of one can change your room and it brings it right down to let the people decide. That's the beauty of town meeting. We don't just have a small group that makes all the decisions, but you let the people decide. And I think that's what, one of the great things about North Andover is we're one of the, the communities that still honor town meeting. And rooms can, rooms can change and great ideas can be brought forward. So I, I love the fact that you're putting a spotlight on all of that, um, with how he voted and, and what you are bringing forward for us to decide how we want it. So, thank you.
I'm pretty certain that a lot of the people in this room tonight just learned a lot about William Sims.
On Mr. Sims, but I guess he turned out okay.
So I, I see in the language here, you're asking for town meeting to, uh, show the judgment was respected and appreciated by this town meeting. Was there ever a discussion of asking town meeting to issue posthumous instructions? To essentially say, you know, in, in, in for the record, the town meeting now is, is correcting the record from 1787?
There was, there was conversation of that. And the general consensus of the, the vibe of the five classes was, we wanted an attempt at an acknowledgement first. Who knows, maybe this could be the beginning of something moving forward. You know, some of the things the students and I have talked about for later is obviously, they're eighth graders, they're in the carrier wing, shouldn't they be in the Sims Wing? I don't think the leaders of my school would like that very much, but, but that was, this was like moving forward, that was definitely some things, but I, I think the students thought if we could get the acknowledgement, see if it's interested and then, uh, they could continue it or future eighth graders continue it. And I don't know if anyone else wants to talk?
So my name's, my name's Sophia Flores-Carrow and something I wanted to add on to what Keshav said is that, um, because Mr. Sims voted yes to the constitution, it influenced a lot of other states to do the same. So that's why it's so important to our government now.
I just wanted to bring back to what Trudy said. I might've sounded like when I talked before that, um, if, I only brought up if the people like agreed and, um, wanted an apology. But I feel like if the people didn't want it, then we should just kinda let it go because he did kind of break a promise. So I feel like it also all depends on like the public of North Andover, like their opinion.
Which is a great thing. You're, you're not taking the, it's my opinion that, that counts. You're allowing people in your town to make the decision, so this is all really very good.
This is truly civic connection.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Well, thank you all, yes, for taking the time to come in. Yes. We expect to see you again. Thank you for coming. You do not need to stay.
Is it possible for, for me to take a picture of a whiteboard with them?
Sure.
Sure, send them all, send them all behind, yeah.
Can we move in the chairs?
Oh, okay. Alright, okay.
Hold on, we're gonna slide the chairs out of the way. There is a process. Just slide that chair. I don't know, let's go.
There we go. Come on, everybody, come on, you're gonna have to pretend you like each other.
Thank you so much. Oh, absolutely, yeah, well, why don't, we'll head out and so you can get your picture.
Oh, yes, of course.
Yes. Alright.
Thank you. Oh, there we go, we're gonna find that. Miss Boston, Steve.
Thank you, North Andover select.
Here, you come in the middle. Thank you. Thank you all.
She's adorable.
Well, that was fun.
Isn't that fun too, because how they would just smile and having a good time.
It's a big deal to have. Alright. Now we will move on to item E where we will make recommendations for warrant articles 12 through 30.
Alright, you ready?
We're ready. We're ready, we're ready, you've been waiting for this.
Article 12 is withdrawn.
So that was easy, see? Done. Good, easy start. Um, article 13 is the citizen petition we just heard about Mr. William Sims Jr. And it's just an acknowledgement, yes.
It's just an acknowledgement, it's a resolution, no binding action taken, it's a majority vote at town meeting.
Make a motion to, uh, recommend favorable action.
They have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Okay, the next article is article 14 and that is a citizen petition for the ban on single-use disposable plastic bags. I did wanna let the board know that we did do, um, some work on the town side, um, to try to figure out now that the bylaw is for 3,000 square feet and above, how many businesses that would affect because that's important to know. We had to do it kinda crudely, which was basically take the assessor's database and work with the town clerk to figure out how many businesses are bigger than 3,000 square feet. The number we came up with is roughly 60, but that is a high number because it takes into account any business that's in a plaza. So closer to town meeting, if it passes, then we would go back and it would be down to a smaller number. Based on the 60, uh, we do think it will cost about $2,500 a year to enforce this bylaw in subsequent years. The first year because of the, um, kind of education that has to be done and that the inspector would have to go into every business, it would be more like $5,000 to $6,000. We do have a contractual employee who does all our food and milk inspectors inspections. So we would basically amend that contract, I'll go back with the bid, or does anyone hear that? We just, we just signed the contract, um, to add this on. And it is paid entirely by the fees that come in for food and milk inspections. Just in case anyone was wondering how that would work. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody wanna start with comments?
Yeah, so just, I remember years ago recognizing these bags hanging from trees and thinking, this is not good. This was probably 10, 15, 20 years ago, I remember when they first came out and, uh, having them, just they were everywhere, hanging from trees and, you know, in my house, we've always used them as liners for other bags and other reasons and tried to make a, at least a double use out of them, but I am 100% in favor of, um, of this article. I think this is something that, um, we can certainly live with and, and, and help the environment by at least one, one more town jumping on the bandwagon of, um, stopping the use of these bags.
I would say I agree with everything that you said, um, Dick, and I think that it's important, we talk about our watershed and our water and how important that is to protect. And, um, the biggest thing that stuck with me from their presentation a couple of weeks ago was that these particles never go away and when they get into our soils and our food supply and, um, and the water. And, um, so I think that it's one small step that we can take in joining the other 144 communities and kinda show our kids too that it's important to take our, care of our environment. And I think that it was really well-written in the sense that it does, um, the 3,000 square feet threshold, hopefully prevents or, you know, gives our small businesses, um, some protection. And so I would also be in favor, sorry.
No, I'd like to just kinda chat on that point in particular, the, with regards to the 3,000 square feet in terms of how it impacts small businesses. You know, and, and one of the things, I'm playing a little bit of catch-up having, you know, not been here when they presented, but I've watched the meeting, watched the presentation, I've spoken with a number of members, both the Sustainability Committee and the Citizens Group here. One of my concerns with regards to protecting small businesses is that I don't know that 3,000 square feet is necessarily the most equitable measure. And the reason I say that is at 3,000 square feet, you'd pick up all the ones you'd typically pick up, Market Basket, CVS, Stop &amp; Shop, whatnot. But you'd exclude someone who's a mega conglomerate like Chipotle, who has 3,000 stores, um, you know, across the country. The way I would look to measure a small business would be by, based on the number of locations that they operate. Right? And if you had a, uh, a business that operates, say, fewer than 10 locations, to me, that's a small business, that's a small family business that doesn't have the same, uh, bulk purchasing power that some of these other groups may have when it comes to buying paper bags or whatnot or complying with this. If you were to move to that model, I think it becomes a little bit easier to enforce too. It's not pulling building plans, it's going to someone's website and seeing, you know, what, how many locations that they happen to have. And I think you still pick up really everyone that, that this measure is intended to target except for maybe one or two. But you pick up a whole host of others that maybe this isn't capturing right now, such as small convenience stores that are cha, chain of variety, or gas station convenience stores that are, are chains. So, um, I don't know how we'd, if we would consider or entertain amendment to that, but that's something that, that would, you know, make me certainly a lot more comfortable with it. I'm 100% behind the, the notion and the, uh, the intent behind it. I feel like that method may present a better protection for our true small businesses.
Would you include in that though, um, franchise businesses?
Yes.
So that, I know you said that they might have quite a few different locations, but in essence, they're pretty much owned by one person who buys into the franchise.
Correct, like a Dunkin' Donuts, yes, some have 300, some have 10. Like I, I'd look at, you know, Rocky's Ace Hardware, right? And that's a family-owned business based in Springfield. They have 48 locations in nine states, it's hard to call them.
Okay, well, that's different, but you understand what I'm saying.
100%, you could have a single franchisee that owns the subway, for example.
Exactly.
But as a part of that franchise, they benefit from the franchisor's purchasing power and structure.
But they're also very expensive to buy.
100%.
Tremendous amount of money to buy a, a good running franchise.
But, but I, and I think a, a, a business owner who happens to be above 3,000 square feet but still only owns a single location faces a lot of the same, the same challenges. So like someone like Liquor Junction that just opened, right? And I believe that this will encompass liquor stores, uh, as written. And I, I'm just, I know we always watch out for these sort of things with unintended consequences and trying to head them off before we can so that a small business doesn't have to live with them for a year before we make any adjustments.
And I, I agree with what you, what you're saying.
I think that though, this came to the table many iterations ago and, um, the group worked diligently to come up with a plan that was something that was not, that was attainable for the town and also met their, you know, requirement. It wasn't without a ton of forethought and homework to get to this point. Now unintended consequences are something we always have to be careful of, but in my mind, I go, we do this this year, we spend a year, you know, because we know that this is one way that the town can, can, the administrative piece of this is doable. And we, we wait the year and see if anybody has come to us to express any kind of problem. And we can change what we're doing if needed as time goes by. I mean, most of the towns that do this do not even put the over 3,000 square foot, um, contingency in there. They just, just blink it. I do feel like that's being very thoughtful to our small businesses. We've not received any negative feedback about that at all, um, from any business owners. So I feel really comfortable with this as it's written, knowing that a year from now we might change our minds and do something different, but.
We really can't change it.
That's right. It would have to be at the.
We have to vote on what's before us, whether we favorable or unfavorable on, on what's before us. We, you know, there can always be a change made on the floor of town meeting if there was an amendment that wanted to be made there, but we can't clearly do that because we're not, we're not the petitioners.
Feel that it's not restrictive enough or too restrictive or, um, yeah.
Yeah, I assume a lot of the language in here was chosen for a reason, you know, so.
I think I, they're actually talking about limiting, you know, when making it voluntary for some of our businesses. I think most of, I forgot the number that they told us, they, but most of them do not.
You said making it voluntary?
Well, if you're under the 3,000.
If you're under the 3,000.
It's voluntary.
Okay, got it.
You don't have to, um.
And a lot of them already do it, but it is voluntary under 3,000.
Again, I, I look at something like, Rose and Dove sells a pack of gum, you know, and they don't have a paper bag that says 40% post-consumer recycled content, does that make a challenge for them? And I think that's one of those things that like, is that who we're, that's not who we're going after, right? In this, yeah, you know.
And I tried to go through like all the businesses and who would, you know, in my own head and I'm like, Rose and Dove says paper, right? Yeah. Yeah, I was trying to think of like who this would really impact.
No, I was looking at butcher boy bags last night and it said recycle on the bottom. It doesn't say 40% post-consumer recycled content, which, which is required as a part of this. Now again, I assume that that is commercially, commercially reasonable standard, that's why that was put in there. But, and again, I'm, I'm masking more, more of my questions out of my own education because I haven't been here for all the history of this, but I just wanna make sure I understand it properly.
So for me, I've got a slightly different approach. There's many things about it that I do like and I totally agree with Dick. There's nothing that drives me crazier than seeing bags hanging from our trees.
Or in our water.
In, in other places as well. My concern is, I guess I'd like to hear from the Board of Health because what we're doing is we're bringing in cloth bags from somebody's home that we really don't know much about or who's carrying it, if they're sick or whatever. I was told of a story that was pretty alarming where somebody brought in a bag and out came some things you don't want in your home or near your food. So I just wanna see how, how do we enforce it? They bring in clean bags or not, or do we have to just go to paper and not do this? I'd just like to see with the Board of Health, their concerns, because we talked about this before during COVID and it was like, we don't know much about COVID, we don't know if people are, they're gonna hand their bag, they have COVID and they're gonna hang it to, hand it to the person who fills it. So I just, um, I'd just like to see how they're, what their feelings are on this and see if we can.
It's sort of hard though because we're not regulating it now, people are using their own.
That's right, people, plenty of people use their reusable bags every.
But is it, is that a good thing?
They don't have to use reusable bags, they'll receive paper bags if they.
Well, that was another thing that I thought, well, if, if, if we feel as though that it, it offers some risk or whatever, then maybe we just go to paper bags.
We, but that's the.
And that's it.
That's the alternative though. It's that, it's, the default will be paper bags instead of plastic bags. It's not that there are gonna be no bags or not banning bags.
There'd be no bags, but perhaps it would just be that we would just do, not be bringing in your.
Because people already do.
Well, I'd like to hear what the Board of Health has to say on that and just to, um, have them weigh in on their concerns about, you know, where people are bringing things in from their home, you don't know if they're washed, you don't know if they were put in a place that they're bringing in things that we really don't want in the grocery store or whatever, and how do we handle that? How do we get around that so it still works? Or is it maybe not an issue? I don't know. But that's.
I mean, it's not, yeah, I can't say I researched that specifically, but I feel like there are 150 towns that do this and not once.
People who use reusable bags are gonna re, are using them today and will probably redo them, use them in the future. And those who don't will probably use paper.
Take the paper bags that are awesome to them.
Plastic today.
Agreed, it doesn't.
I agree. I'm the one who forgets my reusable bags all the time.
One of the things we did, one of the things that we have learned.
Oh, by the way, one of the things we did, one of the things that we have learned that if you leave your, your reusable bag, your reusable cloth bag, and you leave it in the car, especially when it's hot, the bacteria grows in it unbelievable. So these are the things I just want some information from the Board of Health, and I think it's.
Yeah, and they're already happening. So it's, I mean, because.
But that doesn't mean it's done right. And that doesn't mean it can't be done better because it's already happening in other towns.
No, 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 but in our town, plenty of people in this room bring reusable bags into the store when they.
Again, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be a better, safer way for them and for being, bringing in a bag that you have no idea where it's been, what's involved in that bag, that's all. So I just think, you know, let the Board of Health do their job and maybe make some recommendations.
I did reach out to the Board of Health today and just ask them if they plan on taking a position on the article and to let us know so that they could report at town meeting. They wouldn't go in the warrant, but you know, I'm sure that the moderator will be asking the Sustainability Committee if they've taken a position, and they could ask the Board of Health as well. When we voted on this in my last community, the Board of Health did take a position on the article, so I think that would be a good practice, so.
Not yet, no.
And I, and I agree with what our new member says as well. I think, you know, we, we need to take a look at, at how it affects the businesses too, so.
I think this will be the debatable article at town meeting, just like it's the debatable article here, and that's okay.
You're in chicken article.
Yeah, yeah. So it's okay.
And this doesn't mean that I'm not going to support it. I just, I might support it with some conditions or we'll see if some of our, the concerns I might have and others that they're unfounded, so.
But we have to take, take action tonight, right?
We have to make our.
Vote. If we want to print it in the law. Yes. Then we need to take a position tonight. If not, it will say that the Select Board will report at town meeting, which we do and we will be doing on Article 10. So it's up to you if you think there's more information that you want to collect, but you know, if it's the will of the board to vote tonight and there's three of you, then a four of you or whatever, five of you, whatever it is, that's fine too.
That's perfectly fine. I voted alone many times.
Yeah. I would move that the Select Board recommend favorable action on Article 14.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining until we get some more information.
Perfect.
All right.
The next article is Article 15, and that is the bylaw change for a town meeting. So what this bylaw would accomplish is that it would change Board of Selectment to Select Board, and it would give the Select Board the option for, so the way I read it is that any postponement of a meeting could be held on a Saturday.
Or just Saturday morning.
Or any weekday evening.
Yes.
So.
It just adds. It just adds Saturday as an option.
Saturday morning.
Yes. Saturday morning as an option. Yes, thank you.
But we don't have to, yeah, we could do it every time.
Wouldn't have to be a Saturday, right?
What happens, it says, why is there a time? Well, because we're, later on, we're voting for an earlier time, right?
Yes.
So can we?
Well, we can't do anything to this article because it's a citizen petition.
Right.
But you are allowed to, so again, this is on a post, this is merely voting on postponements.
Okay.
So this doesn't affect the regular date and time of town meeting. The way this is drafted, it only affects a town meeting that has been postponed.
But I don't, yeah, it, it concerns me. It's too confusing, I would say, to discern what, I like the change to Select Board, but I don't know what we gain.
It just gives us the option of postponing to a Saturday morning.
But the, the.
It's the will of the moderator, if I am correct, that if there's a postponement of the meeting that.
So he has the authority to postpone. You also have the authority to postpone. Yeah, so.
So what if we disagree?
What do you mean? You have to vote. You mean the moderator, you mean?
You, the moderator in the board.
So under certain instances, under the moderator's law, mostly a state of emergency for weather or public health emergency like we see in the past, he can act. In other circumstances, you can act.
Depends on the circumstance.
Yes, okay.
So all this is doing is adding the two words Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. And changing, like, nothing else about that has changed.
Right. So it normally would read, any postponement shall be held on any weekday evening, Monday through Thursday, and this just adds the words on Saturday morning or any weekday. So it just gives another option, that's all.
Yes.
Chair, I would move favorable action on Article 15.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next article, Article 16, is a little bit different. So this is an amendment to the town charter. So just remember that an amendment to the town charter requires a two-thirds voted town meeting, then it goes to the legislature, and the legislature has to pass it as well before it comes back to the town and changes our charter. What this would do is it would require the town to have their town meeting in June. Currently, the state law is pretty vague on when you, when the Select Board can have their town meeting. It actually allows town meeting to be held in February, March, April, May, or June. So this would be taking some authority away from the Select Board and limiting the town to only have it in June.
And yeah, I don't think that will help. I unappreciate the sentiment behind it, but I do not believe it is the solution.
And we have problems. And during COVID, we had the meeting in June, right?
Yeah, we, yes.
We were able to, to push it out, and it was a little, you know, scary because we were getting so close to the end of the fiscal year that we needed a budget in place. So if we limit it to June or say that it's going to be in June, if we have any kind of a pushout, then we're very, we're in jeopardy of not having a budget in place by the end of the fiscal year. So I think if limiting our timeframe like that is probably not something we want to do.
And also as you push it further out, you're more likely to get pop-up thunderstorms and things like that, which we did have some problems and concerns about that.
Yeah, I, um.
I just think, yeah, just limit, it doesn't give us a long runway if we have to postpone for any reason. The runway gets shorter and shorter. It takes some, some flexibility away from us.
Yeah, I will take a motion.
I certainly appreciate her sentiments and her interest, but.
I completely agree.
I just don't agree.
And I do like changing the Select Board, but I don't think we can do one.
Yeah, I think the whole thing goes. So I will take a motion if we're ready for that.
I recommend unfavorable action.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of unfavorable action? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next article is Article Number 17, which is the citizen petition banning the sale of small animals and pet shops.
Dogs, cats.
Dogs, cats, guinea pigs, and rabbits. As I said, this goes into effect pretty much immediately after the Attorney General approval. And actually, just the enforcing agent for this article is the police.
Okay.
I thought it was interesting. All the animal control officers, they fall under the police, so, sure.
Yeah, I really appreciate your thought about the business. If it was a small business, one of our small businesses, but where it's Petco, and they're such a conglomerate, you know, they're such a large company, I don't know how much this is going to affect their business.
And if somebody else came in, they would just start out not, yeah.
Yeah, I would still like to see, you know, some kind of a grandfathering in for a business that's been in town and has been here for quite some time doing business and, and selling these, these animals and.
We don't have an.
What's that? No, Petco, I'm supposed to.
Petco sells guinea pigs.
Right. They can.
Yeah.
I'll agree with you on that. I feel as well. So they, they came in, that's what they did. That's what they presented to the public. And I think they should be grandfathered, not just given a few months to say, okay. Unless they chose to do it, I don't know. They, they might choose to.
Well, once again, it's not like we can change this so we can vote, and then some maybe a motion will be made from the floor of town meeting to, right? It is possible.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, and I, I think the other thing is the market dictates this. I mean, we don't have dog, places that sell dogs and cats because the market doesn't, doesn't support it anymore. People have learned that they don't want that. And they don't want to get their dogs and cats from that type of establishment. So we don't have them here in North Andover, and I think, you know, maybe the guinea pigs will follow, maybe Petco eventually find out that it's not a good business model, but, but you're right, we can't change it here. So I do agree with the substance of this article and everything else that's in the article. I just don't agree with limiting a business like that or, but also I don't want to change everything for one, one business, either which is a large, large chain business. So I'm kind of torn with this one, to tell you the truth. I'm a little torn.
Yeah, I guess I. You know, just to, to build on Dick's point, I think they have dealt with it in other communities. Looking at the list here, there are definitely other communities where Petco does have stores. Now, I don't know if they're grandfathered or not.
I actually appreciate that there is a provision in there for allowing them to have them on display, like they can bring them from Nevin's and have them in their store for people to choose from, like.
Which they don't even have space for.
So it's in conjunction with, you know.
For adoption.
Yeah, those that are up for adoption. So it's not that there won't be any, they just can't profit from them.
Yeah, they would have to coordinate the effort.
So, just another thought.
Some of those stores do it. I don't know if it was Petco or Pets Smart or something that they sometimes do have adoptable animals in like a separate area.
Yeah, they bring them in on Saturday or whatever, but maybe.
You've gone to the days of the little puppy store at the mall, right?
Thank goodness.
But I do want to, to your point, Rosemary, why, why doesn't it include birds and other caged animals that, I mean, birds go to the MSPCA too. People buy birds and they realize they're a lot more work than what they think they are, and they end up giving them, maybe not to the extent with the guinea pigs and probably the breeding habits of guinea pigs are a bit more intensive than birds as well, so that's probably, and rabbits, of course, that's a dead giveaway on that one.
There's some innovation with the MSPCA and guinea pigs, like it has, they've become overwhelmed with them. Because they are a lot of work. Yeah, we babysat them for two weeks, or for two days, and they're a lot of work.
It does look, there's a, a state law, not, a state bill is proposed this year on this, that would be statewide, so, at least for cats, for cats, dogs, and rabbits.
Yeah, there was one in 2020 and then 2021 as well that never processed, but fingers crossed.
Never gets out of committee, huh?
Okay, I will take a motion if anybody.
I would move that the Select Board recommend favorable action on Article 17.
And I would second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I'll, I'll go with it, and hopefully something comes up from the floor, maybe that.
So, okay, so you are in favor.
Yeah, let them have their day. Hey, I love animals. I think everybody knows that. I've got plenty of pets, and we get them from the rescue and things like that, and we just adore our pets at my house.
Yeah, I do, I agree with.
And I know you do as well.
Yeah, I agree with the argument principle.
I appreciate wanting to protect.
All right, Article 18 is the Capital Improvement Plan. There has been no changes made to the plan since it was presented, what feels like a very long time ago. Just as a point of interest, this does include the bond for the middle school.
Finance Committee made favorable action.
Finance Committee has voted favorably on all of the financial articles, except they have not taken up CPC yet. I believe they're doing it as we speak.
Eighteen.
Favorable action on Article, sorry, what's that one?
All right, I have a motion.
Hold on, I get the article number.
It's eighteen.
Article eighteen, I have to pull back up.
It's on the other page.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 19 is the CPC article. I have heard that CPC may vote, may meet on April 12th to consider whether or not to make changes to their article, which with the warrant closing is, is a, going to be an interesting couple of days. So if they, what I would recommend is that you all vote on the CPC article as presented. However, if any changes are made, we pull your recommendation out because that wouldn't be really fair for the article to change and you have not seen all of it. Yes.
So what could be changing? Just so we.
At the FinCom meeting last week, Chair Callahan said that they may revote on one of the articles, on one of the items.
We don't know which one.
We do, it's the Sutton, Sutton Dam.
Yeah, it was, it was, no action was taken at CPC prior to that, if I, if I may. And I thought they said maybe they were, they were in discussions with FinCom regarding two of the Ridgewood applications as well.
Ridgewood, yes, they had a lot of questions about the barn and the.
The wall.
Stone wall. So FinCom has not voted yet on this article. It would also be okay to report at town meeting if you don't feel like we have enough information to make a recommendation.
So, but tonight we can take each one and make a recommendation.
Oh, you certainly could. You do not have to vote them collectively. You can vote them individually.
I actually think that that might make the most sense.
Yeah, it'll probably be the easiest to amend if there's changes from CPC, right?
And also, and it allows us to have discussion about each of the, the projects that are coming forward.
Okay.
So.
You want to take them individually?
Yes, I think.
All right, so the first project to vote on is $86,800 for Phase Two of the Lake Access Project. That's a recreation item.
That's the second part, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I recommend favorable action on Phase Two of the Lake Access Project for $86,800.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second item is $131,610 for the Parson Barnet House Restoration. This is a historic preservation project.
I would move approval on $131,610 for the Parson Barnet House Restoration, Historic Preservation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The third project is $61,600 for Historic Artifact Preservation. This is a Historic Preservation Project.
I would move approval on this project.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next project is $182,754 for the Stevens Memorial Library Stairs. This is the Historic Preservation Project.
And I would certainly move approval. Well, we don't want anybody falling down the stairs as they're going to the library to read, or get a book.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next project is thirty thousand five hundred dollars for the Historic Preservation Master Plan.
Move favorable action.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next project is fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for the Stevens Coolidge Ballroom Muor- Muor- I almost called it Memorial. Muor-oh, whoo! And that is also a historic preservation project. And since your last meeting, Rick Gorman and Terry Holland and Superintendent Gilligan did meet with the Stevens Coolidge team and came up with, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen a memorialized agreement yet, but came up with some things that they thought could be memorialized. So one was free attendance for North Andover students at Winter Lights. There sounds like there was a lot of detail still to kind of figure out about that. They need to figure out the age groups, the quantities, the timing, and the chaperones.
So is that not, is that just meant for like a field trip? Or is that meant that like all North Andover?
It does, that's the big deal of detail.
So I have questions. Yeah, so I think, right. I mean, if it's a field trip, it's during the day, so they wouldn't really be able to see the lights. So that doesn't seem flushed out yet. The second item was free use of the Stevens Coolidge property for school administration meetings. The third item was educational programs for school groups, including nature-based program in the garden and historical tours of the house starting in fall 2023. They memorialize their Free Community Day.
Which they have one, they have, this, that's the tricky one, because they have community days, but for North Andover, there is only one per season. It's not like it's one per month.
And I think it just, the way I read it is it just, it still is the one per season.
It's the one, it's what they already do. It's what they already.
That's how I read it, yes.
Yes.
I thought it was one per month.
But it's, it's, but it's carefully worded, because right now, they do them one per month, but it's for a different community each month.
April has a month, Lawrence has a month.
Methuen has a month. If it's one per month for North Andover, that's a different ballgame, but that is not at all clear in the.
The next one is they will offer the property free of charge for North Andover high school students to use for their non-professional prom photos.
They already do that.
Okay.
Just historically, that's been every year for the past many years.
They're happy to host youth center programs at the property for free. So they would have their, like, youth center instructors would go to the property and do programming. And then they will continue to offer the go pass at the library that they have now.
Do you know more information about that? Do they offer, is it like aquarium passes? So there's one pass? Or do we know?
I don't know the answer to that. I can check, though.
Unfortunately, just less than five years ago, that property was accessible to anybody that wanted to go in there and sit and read next to the pond or enjoy the gardens. And it's really.
Or propose to somebody. I've heard that over and over.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't be doing that, but proposing to somebody.
No, you're all set.
But just going in and, and sitting by the garden and, or sitting by the pond and reading and just, you know, enjoying the property. At one time, it was just, that was the way it was. There was no restrictions. And now it just seems so restrictive that it's, it's hard to justify giving public money toward.
For me, the issue, I think, is that the goal of CPC is public access to these things, and that project is literally behind a paywall. And while those other opportunities are nice, it doesn't really do much to increase the public access.
It doesn't do, yeah.
It's, it's not.
Everything that they're offering is not giving us, except for the school administration access to that building.
Which, yeah.
Good for them.
And can I tell you, I didn't know her, obviously. I think my dad might have, but I don't know if I'm thinking of the right person for that property. My father lived near there and played in those fields and things like that. But I just can't, I find it hard to believe that she, who would involve herself with this, this donation and support and all, wouldn't want the people of North Andover enjoying that property, but.
They're charging a fee.
Mind you.
Like, they're, like, I mean, they're a nonprofit, but they're.
They made forty-four million dollars, well, almost forty-five million dollars in revenue last year, the trustees of reservation.
Total, not just this.
No, no, right, total. Just, I just looked at.
And like Dick said, over the past couple of years, it's changed so much that they, I know that they've put a lot of money into the property, of course.
They have, they've, they've made it beautiful. But the fact of the matter is, this project doesn't increase public access to anything.
But it does in one way, in that, that portion of the building is not open to the public at all right now because of the disrepair of the mural.
So you pay, you get to go into that.
If we help support the restoration of that mural and you get access to the building, they want to open up access to the building. To say that the building is never accessible isn't, isn't true. It is.
No, I mean, if you pay, yeah.
No, but it's.
Once a month at a community day.
It's, it's free to.
It's a pass that there's one community day.
Yeah, I, again, I, I read the community day differently, where I would, I would say one community day a month. Should be our, should be our demand.
I agree. I totally, I would be singing a different tune if once a month, North Andover.
And again, to, to recall that the CPC recommendation was conditioned upon a number of wish list items that.
But they, that haven't quite been worked out.
Have not quite come together yet. Correct.
Right.
Or discounted, community discount. We should get, if we, if they won't give it for free or free access, a substantial community discount. I think most people would appreciate that.
Totally. And I, and even again, once a month is, to me, that makes all the difference. If there's one day a month that residents of North Andover could go into those grounds.
I would also think that the more people that have access, the more likely they are to get other donations because they fall in love with it.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that.
Because they become members.
Don't we all do that?
Absolutely.
Remember, if we were able to access it freely, and then once that stopped, there was a bit of.
I actually agree with that.
And so I just don't understand why the, the access to the grounds, just during the week, you know, to stroll on the grounds, something like that, I don't understand why that was ever taken away.
I also, issue with the field trips that they're offering. I mean, they should be doing that. Like, that, like, they should be having our kids in that.
The zoning requires fifty percent educational programming.
They just said they just hired an educational liaison director, which they hadn't before.
They're required.
Right?
I can't speak to their operations, although when we brought that specific item up, they did say, we've, we now have a dedicated staff person to address exactly that, to get, whether it was every fourth grader, the cycle through goes through.
Which they're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
So we, we do give that from the historic commission, our kids go through.
Absolutely.
And we, and I don't believe that we pay. I don't know, maybe.
I don't think you'd have to pay for the kids to go in.
No, you would not.
But we don't know. We don't know, because they don't have any programs established.
Dedicated structured program. And frankly, that's not the biggest win in this. I mean, some of the biggest things that, that, that the youth center certainly wanted was access to Winter Lights, specifically, the original ask was for underprivileged kids, or kids who, on a need-based basis. I mean, I don't think anyone's asking for all forty-eight hundred students deaf free access to Winter Lights. So I, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. I think maybe CPC, if they get some revised answers, or don't get answers, they may revise what they're gonna do. I don't want to speak for, for Chair Callahan. But I would say we should wait on that. It would be my.
I feel like, without having more information, we can't make.
I agree, yeah.
I agree.
So moved to, moved to table?
Yeah.
Moved to, should we move to table that particular item? Is that what we're supposed to do?
Well.
Make a recommendation at town meeting for that item.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything. We just.
Make a proposal.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, we hold off on the Stevens Coolidge Ballroom Memorial Historic Preservation until town meeting.
Perfect.
Second.
Motion.
No, no.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, the next item is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the second burial ground restoration. It's historic preservation.
Move to recommend favorable action on the second barrel ground restoration project.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for people at home, they know that we've already had extensive presentations by, by Selectman Roach, when he was the chair of the CPC on each one of these. So we're very well, we're not just voting on them. Based on the description, we've seen them all.
The next item is twenty-five thousand dollars for the preservation of historic records. Okay.
Chair, move favorable approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I actually think we may want to wait on this one in particular. I think CPC was waiting for a clarifying point on eligibility based on town council's review. There is.
I'm going to amend that we make our recommendation at town meeting.
Go second, Chad.
Okay, I have a motion and a second that we will wait until town meeting to make a recommendation on the preservation of historical records. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is two hundred and five thousand dollars for the preservation of the barn at four nineteen Johnson Street. We did just find out that FinCom voted unfavorably, I'm sorry, FinCom took no action on this item. Basically, there was, from what it sounds like, from what I'm getting, a motion for unfavorable action, and it was a four-four vote. So the article failed, basically.
The article failed, okay.
So they're, they're taking, but their report will be that they've, there's no action on the barn from FinCom.
I guess the, my hesitation with this is that it is going to be a storage facility. And again, we're talking about public access and they're not gonna, we, nobody will have public access to this. I understand that they, the Rose, Ridgewood needs storage, but I don't know that we pay for that through CPC funds.
I mean, I guess my, my kind of rebuttal to that would be that public access isn't always the hurdle that we have to meet at CPC. It's, it's public good. And the public good in this sense is the preservation of the barn itself. While I think access is important, it's certainly something that is discussed as a, as a point in the meeting, it's not a requirement, per se, for a historic preservation project. Just a point of clarification on that. I, I, I'm not disagreeing with your sentiment of it, so.
I mean, do we have, I don't know, certification that this is even a stor-, I mean, I know it's an old barn, but like, is it?
Is it historic? Well.
We have a letter from the historic commission, which is what's required for CPC. If it's not on the National Register of Historic Documents.
So it's not on the National Register, but the historic commission is telling us it's historic.
Which makes the CPC eligible. Yes.
And Judge Washington's left there.
The Liberty Tree, right?
What makes it historic?
The age.
Just the age?
Not that anybody was.
Yeah, what, how does it play into the history of North Andover?
And I think in Ridgewood's application, it was that it was a historic dairy barn of where there used to be many within our community that there are, so I'm told, that there are a lot fewer these days. So as they are running out and, that, that was the significance, I can summarize, I'm half CPC, of this particular project was, and CPC cut down the original request to get to the amount to keep the, to keep the barn in place, to shore it up, fix the roof, and, and deal with the structural items, not necessarily the whole kit and caboodle for a full restoration, so.
I'll just add, the town council did review all of the articles, and her notes on this one is that the historical commission determined that the barn at four nineteen Johnson Street is of historical significance to the town. Because this is privately owned, prior to the release of the funds, the party should enter into a historic deed restriction relative to the structure in an agreement to allow some level of access to the property by the public. The funds will be used to restore and preserve the barn. This application and proposed use of funds is permitted under the Act. So we asked her to go through every single item, just to let us know that it was applicable.
But that's, but those details haven't been worked out. So we're going to be voting without having all of the information about what that agreement is. So that doesn't.
We're back to.
Well, yeah, so that, we would have to, town, so that, this was, once it's been voted by CPC, it, it leaves CPC's hands, right? CPC's only job.
Is to say, yes, no, okay.
Is to say, we like the article, we don't like the item, we don't like the item. The actual negotiating should really happen by the administration, and, because we have authority to actually negotiate contracts and agreements. And so typically, what happens is these pass, and then we come, we contact them and say, in order to let the release these funds, the following, sometimes we would even include it in our motion at town meeting. So if we heard from all of you that the only way that you would support that is with the historic deed and a level of access, we could include that in the motion.
Okay, that makes more.
In the contingency.
CPC places on any of these items, I think, are intended to become a part of that, so that they end up in the grant agreements, because I think that's.
I guess my question is, what happens if you can't come to an agree?
Then we wouldn't release the funds, as long, because you, we would have hinged it on in motion.
And I guess who, you determine whether it's an adequate agreement.
We would go back to, with town council, right?
Whether it's an adequate agreement.
If we could not get an agreement and update them. We were unable to get the deed restriction, there is no access. Yep.
Any other comments about the barn?
Ridgewood Cemetery Association purchased it in December last year, I think. October, December, somewhere in there. They purchased the property and the barn came with it.
The entire GR family property.
Yeah, yeah.
And they plan to use it for graves in the future. Mr. Rand told us that today.
When they run out.
When they run out.
They would extend the cemetery across the street.
Yes.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, the barn will hold equipment or whatever they do with it after we renovate it for two hundred and five.
So is this one that we want to move on to? Do we feel like we want to hear from CPC, now that, now that FinCom has made a recommendation, and those recommendations may go back to CPC, is this something we want to kind of sit with?
I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay. So.
Motion to make a recommendation at town meeting on the barn at Johnson Street.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of waiting?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's take this to the next one. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the restoration of the boundary wall at the cemetery. FinCom just voted not to support this one, so unfavorable. So do we want to hold off on this one, too, waiting to see what CPC does?
I think so. I will take a motion to hold off on voting on this.
Okay.
Motion to table until, or take, make a recommendation at town meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to wait until town meeting for a recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're almost there. Next is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Stevens Estate Stables, also known as the Carriage House.
I'll recommend favorable action on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Stevens Estate Stables.
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ten percent allocation for affordable housing.
I would move approval on this one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the acquisition of Zero Bradford Street.
I'll recommend favorable action on the acquisition of Zero Bradford, Bradford Street, sorry.
Is that property management, but would, is it a real farm?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And fifty thousand dollars for administrative expenses.
I move favorable action on administrative expenses.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Woo, okay.
Thank you.
Article twenty. Let's move on to something easy. Here, Article twenty is the salaries of the elected officials.
Chair, move favorable action.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Article twenty-one is revolving funds, and there's three new revolving funds that we're adding this year. Two of them are for tailings, and basically, it has to do with the collector and the town treasurer, and it allows us basically to pay to do tax tailings if we choose to do them. And the third one is ambulance CPE. It's a reimbursement that we get for this, from the state for ambulance, and what we want to do is start saving that so that we can use it for ambulance expenses and the acquisition of new ambulances.
Okay.
I move favorable action on Article twenty-one.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article twenty-two is the budget.
We've gone over. Can we make?
Chair, I will move favorable action on Article twenty, hold on, I want to make sure I get the twenty-two.
Twenty-two, you got it.
With my, with my thanks to the town staff for putting this together and, again, shipping us through another great year, upcoming year.
Thank you.
Yes.
So there's nothing from Finance Committee yet on.
They've already voted favorably.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with our great thanks.
The next two articles at town meeting will be taken collectively, which is the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the FinCom has already voted favorably.
Okay.
Collectively.
Right.
Move approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, Article twenty-five is to create through special legislation, so similar to the charter change that we just talked about, the Special Purpose Revolving Fund for the Stevens Estate. We had created it as a regular revolving account, because it was user fees, but DOR didn't like that. So they recommended we do it this way. So basically, this just would be special legislation. It does require a two-thirds vote.
I will have approval, because we don't want to pick fights with DOR.
No, we don't.
No.
Do what they say.
For that reason and that reason, it all works.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Article twenty-six is Article twenty-five's sister, and DOR, when they decided they didn't like our revolving account, they also had us close the one we had. So that put two hundred and eighty thousand dollars into free cash. And we need that money to maintain, man, keep Stevens Estate going.
To the Stevens Estate.
Yeah. So we're just transferring it back from free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three general fund.
I will take, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article twenty-seven is the transfer of overlay surplus. So overlay is the money that we put in the budget every year to pay for tax abatements. So anybody who thinks that they've been overvalued puts an application in. If it's accepted by the appellate, by our assessors, then it comes out of this fund. Or if it's not accepted, and then they opt to go to the appellate tax board, the suit on the determination will also come out of this fund. Back in around two thousand nine, under the Municipal Reform Act, they had us take all of that money and put it together. We used to keep it separately, so we would have like twenty-twenty-one's abatement funds, and twenty-twenty-two abatement funds, but now they're all in one big kind of pile. And the Board of Assessors can basically say, all of the cases are closed for this year, that year, this year, we no longer have that year, that year, this year, we no longer have that liability. They can vote to release those funds. So they have done the vote to release the funds, but town meeting has to vote to appropriate those if we want to use them for a purpose. If we don't vote to appropriate them, they go back to the general fund at the end of the year. Because we have some kind of big stranger request coming out of the assessing office because we have to do our revaluation assessments and we have to do an updating, we have to update our computer system down there as well, we're asking to use those overlay funds for assessing costs.
Makes sense.
And this is just a one time?
Yeah, it's just one time.
We'll use them all, do you think?
I think we'll use the whole 190. Yeah, we have estimates. Yeah, we have estimates.
Speed where they need to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions about that? If not, I will take a motion.
Favorable action.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 28 is the transfer to stabilization. So as you know, our financial policies require us to have 5% of our general fund revenues from the year before. Every year we have a transfer to keep us at that level and this year that transfer is $299,567.
Okay, I'll take a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 29 is a transfer of the capital stabilization account and this will transfer $350,000 to the capital stabilization account. And that's the account that we're basically saving money in to do all of the designs for facilities master plan two so that we don't have to go to bond for those.
Perfect. Okay.
29.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, Article 30 is a little unusual for us. We had a group of capital requests that came through DPW and we, they were all for less than $25,000, so they didn't qualify as a capital improvement, but they totaled $119,000. So it seemed kind of silly to put them in the operating budget and inflate their budget that way. So what we did was we took all of those and created us a rolling stock request and I was telling Brian the other day that we call it rolling stock because it's on wheels. So it's literally rolling. But it includes a dump trailer, which is primarily used for the parks and the hauling of materials. That costs $15,000. A compressor, which is $30,000 and is used at the highway department for cutting and patching the roads. A mower, which is $25,000 and it's the one that's used primarily for mowing the common. And then a vehicle lift, which is $49,000 and actually is one $25,000, so I don't know why it ended up here, but it did. It's a portable lift and it's used in the maintenance of vehicles. It allows us basically to move around in the maintenance, in the maintenance space if we have multiple vehicles broken down. With the exception of the vehicle lift, this is all replacing equipment that we currently have. So that will go be declared surplus by all you and then out to bid.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I will take a motion.
I need to recommend favorable action, so I will recommend favorable action.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion about this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to Article 38, which is school building commission. If you remember correctly, last time we left here with a little bit of kind of indecision on the direction in which we were going. I attempted compromise language, which I'm going to hand out to you right now. It's the highlighted section. It took into account, I'll pass it up.
Yeah, it's not going to be in here. Thank you.
You may have to refresh your warrant. I'm good, I'm good. Okay, so basically what I did was I kept it at the unanimous decision, but I said that if notice it, no unanimous decision can be made within one week of interviewing all the candidates, all within the timeline set by MSBA, we'd go back to a majority. So that way, if there was one person who was being difficult. We could kind of flip back and say, all right, you're obviously being unreasonable and we would go to a majority vote and it would be set by timeline. It was the only thing I could really think of that would work and not make this kind of ridiculously cumbersome. Yeah, I did go ahead based on our conversation last time and changed this to include all MSBA projects as well, but I added language that basically says that if it has to be additional voting members and ex officio members as mandated, it will be populated in that accordance. So I don't know, I mean, that was my attempt.
Thank you for that. Is there any discussion? Does? I think so.
I have not shared this with the moderator yet, but I think, I think based on our discussion last time, that he would be okay with it. And I have asked the school committee if they were interested in also doing a recommendation, even if it's not printed in the warrant, we could ask them at town meeting, did you review this article? Because it does, of course, affect them as well. Yeah. I don't think they have yet, but Superintendent Gilligan was going to add it to their. Oh, yeah, so Superintendent Gilligan had reached out to see if there was anything else besides the three-year contracts that they always vote on. And I just asked him to opine on this article and also if they would be willing to take a position on the CIP article because it does have the middle school in it and I think that it's important for us to show a united front on that project.
Okay, so I will take a motion.
I'll recommend favorable action on Article 38.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you for working through that.
No problem. It wasn't that painful. See, I told you it was going to be okay. We did a good job. Run item F, the start time of town meeting.
Yeah, we're just going to do it from here. Okay, so moving on to item F, the start time of town meetings.
So it's come to my attention that when we voted, we may not have said what time we were going to have town meeting. We have printed it in the, in the draft warrant at 6:30 and every time we've kind of, like today when we did the warrant article of the day, we said starting at 6:30. So we assumed we would just keep it 6:30. The moderator, I think, is happy with that time as well, but we thought it would be important for us to memorialize it here with you as well.
Yes, it possibly is. Okay.
Chair, I'm motion that we set the town start time for town meeting to be 6:30 p.m.
Thank you. Perfect. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, since our friend Mark is still sitting here, maybe we could pull him up.
Absolutely. What item are you?
He's item I.
Okay, we're going to move ahead to item I, a request of the poet laureate committee to use the town common on May 6, 2023, from 12 to 3:30 for a poetry contest award celebration with a rain date of 5/13/23. Come on. Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Well, I brought a sign, so you may have seen these signs around town. Mark Bore, Ten Heath Circle, town poet laureate. So you may have seen these sounds, signs around town. We also have flyers, one in town hall, among other businesses in town to promote it. This is our third year for the poetry contest and we had the inspiration from one of the, from Jason O'Toole, who's, who's one of the poet laureate committee members, that Anne Bradstreet herself should be the theme this year. And so the, the theme is let Anne be your muse. And so we have information on the town, on the town website, the contest website. So if you go to Anne Bradstreet.
On the town website.
Yeah.
We've seen it.
Yeah, actually, you know, yeah, it should be there. Right.
There you go.
Yeah. So if you go to Anne Bradstreet, poetrycontest.com, you can see the rules for submitting poems and also just links to, to some pages that I've put together that have a couple of different histories, one a brief one, one a little bit longer one about the life of Anne Bradstreet. I mean, she really was amazing. You know, she came from England, she came over on the Arbella in, when she was 18 years old. She was at the founding of Boston and she was one of the settlers that founded Boston, founded Cambridge, moved to Ipswich and then with a group of settlers founded North Andover. So she raised eight children and she was pregnant with her sixth child when she moved here to the frontier Indian Territory and wrote also while, while caring for her family when her husband was away serving the, the colony and also serving as the governor of the colony. So she, she's just an amazing person.
I'm going to add something a little bit off message, but not really. Arbella Insurance Company, my husband did work for them.
Yeah, is named.
Yes, maybe we should reach out to the officers there. It is a Massachusetts company. I think they, they do sell in other states, but it's Massachusetts founded, but maybe they could, you know, do something or sponsor it somehow or just make it.
Actually, gosh.
Yeah, if you want, you can call me tomorrow and I'll see if I can get you who, who would be good to speak to.
Yeah, because that's one of the things that we've talked about is getting support. We've actually made a request to Melissa and maybe make a request to all of you that we would love to have some, some funding from the town to use for promotion and advertising, you know, whether it's 250 or $500 a year or whatever, but something would, would help, you know, for, for promoting the event.
Very appropriate and I think it gives them something to kind of crow about a little bit too.
Right.
The ship that brought the first poet.
Right.
Published poet.
There also, so if you, if you don't come up with anyone, I can probably get you in touch with someone.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll give you a call. Okay, yeah.
Is that appropriate, like cultural council?
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah, we've been, you know, it's one of those things where it's like, oh, we got to, you know, just need to get things together a little bit better.
Early, early, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Cultural council deadline is like in January or something.
Yeah.
Or I don't even remember what time I met.
We believe that we would probably get support, you know, for a small grant, that kind of thing. It's, it's always just, sometimes one more thing. But yeah, we're excited to have the poetry contest. One of the things, just to let you know, we thought about it this year and realized that we want to open it up to people from other towns anywhere next, next year, that we realized that it probably would have done better at promoting poetry in North Andover to have it open to anyone from anywhere, even we kind of saw it as a, a special town thing and kept it, which, which it is this year. You have to be, you have to live, work or go to school in North Andover to submit a poem to, to be, you know, considered for, you know, winning. Well, right, actually, that's true too.
Same page. Yeah, that you have a category for townspeople, but then a CADs category for.
Or an open category. Right. Yeah, yeah, I thought of that also. So anyway, they, maybe you know a little more about it. Great, thank you.
Does anyone have questions about this event or the request? Yeah. All right.
The poet laureate committee to use the town common on May 6, 2023, from 12 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. for a poetry contest award celebration with a rain date of 5/13/23. I'm assuming same hours.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, back to item G, a request from the Armenian National Committee of Merrimack Valley to raise the Armenian flag at the common on 4/21/23 at 2 o'clock p.m. with a rain date of 4/29/23. So we've definitely done this in the past. I think so too.
Yeah. And we've done a proclamation for much longer than that.
We, yeah, but they didn't submit that.
About that because it was a year, it was a proclamation that was every.
Oh, it was a perpetual or imperperity proclamation. Got it.
Like to invite everybody to attend and if maybe somebody wants to say a few words and we can certainly print up the proclamation again.
Perfect. Great, okay, so there are no other questions? I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll recommend favorable action on the request to, from the Armenian National Committee of Merrimack Valley to raise the Armenian flag at the common on 4/21/23 at 2 p.m. with a rain date of 4/29/23.
I have a motion. And a second with no further discussion. I will, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item H, a request from the North Andover Merchants Association to use the town common on September 22, 2023, from 3 o'clock p.m. to 7 p.m. and September 23, 2023, from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. with a rain date of 9/24/23 and to close off Mass Avenue between Osgood Street and Andover Street. I think we probably need to add to that.
For the closure?
On the night before. For the rain date, just include the rain date on the.
So the night before is just for their setup?
It's just for.
The Merchants Association Fall Festival. Right, so the, and so the night before is just for setup.
We need to state the hours at Mass Ave and Osgood will be.
It'll be 7 a.m. to 7.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Probably not, then our Merchants Association to use the common, which on the dates specified. And to close.
Good.
Mass Ave for that, Mass Ave between Osgood and Andover Street.
Okay, I have a motion. And a second. I actually am not going to vote on this item, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Item J, we are now up to the Exchange Club of Lawrence in Andovers to use the town common from May 27, 2023 to June 18, 2023 for the Field of Honor. Mr. Westcott was here a little bit earlier, but this is exactly what they've done each year and. It's an amazing display and one of the things he did say to me is that this year when people take their flags, they're actually, they can take it on the pole, but they're actually also going to fold them up and put them in plastic packaging if that is what people prefer. So they think that they will actually probably sell more flags that way because people don't know what to do with the flag on the pole when they get it. That was our discussion today.
Honorably move approval on this. It's a great, great event.
It's wonderful. I have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item K, request of Raina Lamb to film at the town common in Stevens Estate slash Lake Kachikowick on April 11, 2023 through April 14, 2023. So you probably know more about this.
It's an ever-changing application. So this is a woman who's being recognized who lives in North Andover or is from North Andover as a trailblazer and they're recording a kind of documentary about her. The locations have changed, kind of constantly as they've come and kind of scout the locations. Currently, there really isn't a lot of things that would be on town property. They may perhaps visit just Osgood Hills. So what we were, we were asking you to do is to just give the town managers office the authority to allow the filming as we get more information. You just don't meet again before.
Before they would be filming?
Yeah.
It's very small. How do I say this delicately? Does it need to be juried at all in some way to make sure that filming on town property is something that we would?
So we never do.
Do any of that.
Yeah, we never do tell people what they can or cannot kind of film and we've had horror movies, we've had all kinds of interesting things. And nothing in our policy, I believe, allows us to.
It probably doesn't in the Constitution as well.
Yeah. But what, like a lot of.
As the word came out of my mouth, I was thinking, maybe I don't want to say this.
A lot of what, you know, things that they've been talking about doing is, is, which they're not doing now, is showing her kayaking, showing her running her, where she jogs every day. So it's kind of like feel good.
Oh, okay.
It's a day in the light.
Okay, I didn't know anything about it, so I was like, well, what's it about?
Could be anything.
They're not going to be using the lake.
No, they're not using the lake at all.
Okay, well, I, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I have to redeem myself after that.
You're all good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item M, to confirm the town manager appointment of Brawl Spite to the Board of Health.
Thank you, so Brawl is being brought forward by the Board of Health Director as well as[1680.31]
as members of his board, he had applied for various different things that he was excited for, and we're happy to welcome him, so he is a chemical engineer, which is good because we recently have lost the engineer that we did have on the commission, so this is kind of a nice change. He was also the chief of staff for the Public Building Commission of Chicago, so kind of an interesting background, he's worked on issues with sanitation, zoning, construction, real estate, as well as environmental and conservation issues, so we're very excited to welcome him to the team.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board appoint Brawl Spite to the Board of Health for a term ending June 30, 2025.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to remind everybody that this year, I've decided to take all of my expiring appointments, ask everyone to reapply, and also just let people know that what we have available for appointments in the town, so a letter is going to all of my appointees who are expiring this June, today, actually, emailed out today, and I have talked to several of them already on the phone about it, and encouraged them to apply again, but I just think, after seeing how many people you all had for the middle school and the 400 Gate Pond Road, it's important to just see what other talent might be out there that we're missing, and I think it's just good practice, so it'll be exciting to see what happens, but that's what we are, and those letters did go out today.
Okay, thank you for that, please.
Now, these are to reapply, that's the letter, so they're coming back in, or you're already approving them?
Nope, so basically what I did was, I sent a letter to all of my appointees who are expiring on June 30, letting them know that they're welcome to reapply, but that I was going to open it up for anyone to apply, so that I could interview people and meet them and see if there might be people who are interested in serving.
But you know what's good that we have done in the past, is that we bring them in anyways, just to see how are things going?
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
What, do you have any ideas? Is there anything that you want to discuss? So, even though that they could have been on for 10 years, it's kind of good to bring them in and just tell me what's going on, how.
Yeah, and they may ultimately be the ones to elect, right?
That's right.
But, you know, I just think it's, it'll be nice to meet some new people and get some fresh eyes.
We've definitely seen that of, you know.
So, we're putting it to trial, we'll see what happens.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
I just don't have enough to do in the month of May, so I figured. What's a few one meetings? So, that's what we're doing.
Sleep ends today.
Yeah.
All right, our next item is our consent items, so we'll take them together, and to accept a donation from the library trustees in the amount of $1,148.65 to purchase new nonfiction children's books, and a request from the police department to surplus equipment. I'll take a motion.
Chair, I'll move approval for the consent items.
Okay, I have a motion, I'll take a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Approval of minutes, did everybody have a chance to review the open session minutes of March 27? They look good to me. Let me know when you're set.
Chair, I'll move approval of the minutes from March 27, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it, we're moving on to old business, which is really exciting, because we're going to have an update on our goals.
Right, so, as you know. We're coming to the end of fiscal year '23, so we'll probably have one more update on these before the fiscal year ends, one of the kind of the confusing processes that we have in many other communities as well, is that we set our next fiscal year goals pretty much right after we set this fiscal year's goals, and so it gets very confusing on what we're doing and where we're going, but I want, what we're trying to do is just update you quarterly on the current year's financial goals, and so what, I won't read these all to you, but what we did was, we had the different staff who are assigned to these goals, update our spreadsheet that we keep, and you can see basically what progress we've made on each of the goals as you go down, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have on any of these, and then we'll update again, kind of in the June timeframe, so you can see who we are. Do you want me to run through all of them?
Where is it? It's not linked on the agenda.
No, it's linked online.
Oh, if you refresh the agenda.
Yeah, if you go in through, through the, like, actual meeting. Yeah, it is linked, I can run through them. So, for maintaining fiscal discipline and AAA bond rating, obviously that's ongoing, continuing, and will have to be happening forever, so no real status change there, except that we continue to, to work with that, you know, again achieving our GFOA this year, and we haven't bonded in four years, so when we do the middle school bonding, there'll be another full evaluation to see where we are ranked. I don't have any concerns, though. For collaboration with the schools to determine capital and fiscal needs for the district, obviously that continues to go very well, the school building committees have been populated, at this town meeting we'll fund middle school construction, and through advocacy and partnership, our Chapter 70 funding has seen an increase the last two years, which has been pretty great, and we hope to see it again this year, obviously we won't be banking on anything yet, but the governor's budget does have a significant increase in Chapter 70.
And just to add to that, over the past five, I know you did a spreadsheet, so it's worth noting that over the past five years, the schools have seen an increase per people spending, do, I don't know if you have that number.
Off the top of my head, I don't know what the per people spending increase is, but I can certainly look it up, if you're interested.
Oh, but it's, it's quite, and that's a tribute to your staff working with the schools and.
Thank you.
Knowing that that's important to the community.
We have a good relationship, and it goes a long way when we're trying to get things done, yeah, so we appreciate that. And I can get you that number, can also get you, I think, you know, what speaks even, I think, more than the per people increase is class size, and how that has decreased so significantly.
I think we got to say it, and we're going to say it again, that there's progress being made.
Absolutely, thank you.
Absolutely.
For the continued revitalization of downtown, as you know, we have a $300,000 APPA grant and $325,000 from the Columbia Gas Fund set aside to develop engineering and design documents for this project, and RFP has been issued for this design work, and I actually think they would do today. They would do today, we have four, and so those are being reviewed. So, working with developers to mitigate burdens of large development in accordance with the master plan, this year we really haven't seen any new proposals from large developers, as you've heard during my conversation regarding new growth for the budget moving forward, we don't actually see any really large developments on the horizon. Continued investment in sidewalk maintenance and expansion, so currently under construction is the sidewalk redesign on Waverly Road in front of the school, and we are currently going out to bid on the remaining gas restoration contracts, the public meetings on those, I know some of you are in that area, are upcoming, and these contracts will include CIP funding for sidewalks that were not part of the gas restoration. For the pilots with Merrimack College and Brooks, obviously, that continues to be work in progress, however, this year, we have been working with both Merrimack and Brooks for new community initiatives that have been very positive, so the Brooks School, for the first time since COVID, did allow the town back in for ice skating, and because of that, we've been able to fund our children, children's programming and concerts over the summer, I don't think I've seen Rick so happy as when he was reporting how much money we received from the ice skating, it was a big success, and for the first time, and I think most people's memory, Merrimack College marched in the Santa Parade, and so these little incremental things that we're doing is continuing to build those relationships. As far as the rec complex, we all know that the litigation continues, the town waits for the final disposition in both cases, and the eminent domain article is at town meeting. For our facilities master plan two, we have created the school building committees, we continue the first-year process with the MSBA, we're funding the middle school construction at May town meeting, and we have demonstrated a continued commitment, probably to the dismay of many, to the financial plan, and we're not going to move away from it, so we're continuing that, and we're proud to continue to move that forward. For our technology upgrades and security, we continue to have our cybersecurity trainings for all of the townside employees, we continue to have conferences, attend conferences with other municipal groups, this year we've implemented some really interesting technology that has allowed us to really be, I think, on the forefront of cyber, cybersecurity, it actually comes out of Germany, so it's been a really interesting project. The economic development website is complete, as far as 40B, in our continued collaboration with the Affordable Housing Trusts, we began our process to update the housing production plan with MVPC, we complied the first step of the MBTA community regulations, and actually, we got a letter today that we are in compliance with the interim filing, so that's good news, because communities that are not in compliance are not in, not in good shape right now. The inclusionary zoning bylaw passed at town meeting, and there's one more small change for that bylaw, as you know, proposed for May 2023. For the intimsensible agreement for water, which was one of the public works, they met with Andover and their consultant, and they've reviewed the existing connection plans and determined that the existing system is not viable, so the next meeting will be over the summer. For Route 114, improvements in economic development, we're continuing to work with Mastah, and they're continuing to revise, revise the project, they had a well-attended public meeting at Merrimack College, currently the design does not fully take via eminent domain the three homes next to Chestnut Green, as you all know, the project is anticipated to be advertised in 2024 with construction starting in 2025, and we now have a page on our website for the project. For expanding the use and availability of renewable energy, so as you know, the town just got from the select board APPA funds to hire a sustainability and energy manager, and that position is now, has been advertised, and additionally, we are working with the Attorney General's Office on the electrification of the youth center. We applied for our two new community compact grants, and we received them, we have ongoingly, ongoingly is that a word? I may have made that one up, developing a plan for the use of our American Rescue Plan Act funding, as you know, there is also a website for that on the town website that I talk about all the time, and approximately two-thirds of that funding has now been awarded. For increasing community engagement, that's ongoing, something that we're always working on, and Sarah and I actually both just participated in a webinar about, I moderated it, and she was there, about community engagement and some of the new tools and sites that we can use to move forward. For the review of staffing and leadership ranks at the police and fire departments, as you know, this has started, we have the three new lieutenants positions that were created during the last budget, we're continuing to review the fire rank structure, but in this budget, there is a second fire prevention officer being created, it's not being created, it's being continued, it was created and being paid for by Amazon, but as you all know, we've seen so much success with that position, we have funding to continue it. We have finalized and completed the field master plan, we have finalized and completed the ADA Accessibility Transition Plan, the multi-factor authentication for the school staff computers is ongoing, for the town staff computers is, as I was telling Select and Valco earlier, now done, and we are continuing our cybersecurity training, which is funded by state grants, and we do annually. And that's all the goals, I know, right? We got a lot done this year, which is exciting, so.
The field master plan, is that linked on the website somewhere, or?
So, it is, I believe, linked on the website, the only thing that we haven't done is done a financial plan for the outer years, only because things are changing.
Totally.
Kind of constantly right now, but we have kind of prioritized the first four years. As you all know, we're moving forward with the design, next listening center with the pickleball court.
Pickleball court.
Make sure I say it loud.
Re-putted pickleball court.
They're coming. It is in documents, okay.
It's in the document.
Okay. It's exciting.
It is, thank you.
No problem.
Just on the 40B and our 10% affordable housing, we had a consultant, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Did we get a report back on that, or?
She, I believe, is still, she's done all of her analysis and is still working on recommendations, some of her recommendations that she was going to bring forward, we've already done, like the inclusionary zoning, and so she's continuing to kind of think about, we want her to work with the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
And so it's become kind of a longer-term project as we walk through it.
Okay, no, she's great.
Yeah, we use Judy Barrett.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Our next item is to set our meeting dates to review our policies.
So, we were wondering if it, perhaps, this might be a good summer project for you guys to have your meeting, just because it has, we've had a lot of kind of meeting changes already, and then town meeting.
It's really good.
Very, very soon, everyone.
It's really soon. It's a lot, it's a lot to ask of all of you to fit that in before town meeting.
Yeah, it's just, I think, too hard, so we're wondering, you know, it does calm down in the summer, does it make sense to kind of have, like, you know, early afternoon, afternoon meetings, working group meetings, then, where things are a little bit calmer for everybody.
Early in the summer?
Early in the summer, yeah.
Just to make sure it, it happens. I think that's fine, we can work out.
All right, so we'll start sending dates around for the summer, once we have our vacations figured out, too. Laura's going away.
All right, that works. Town managers' report?
Just one thing, that it is dispatcher appreciation week, and I, they are the quiet people behind making sure that we're all safe, and the things that they do, I mean, if you've ever heard the recordings from Columbia Gas, it's pretty amazing.
I've heard.
And so we want to make sure we recognize them this week and thank them for all that they do.
Yes, agreed.
We do thank them very much, they save lives.
They do.
And they keep.
The unsung heroes, right?
They are, yeah.
Definitely the unsung.
Select board updates?
May I just ask the town managers just to, so we can mention to the public, when I was in the office earlier today, we were getting calls on the electric bills, is there any updates on that that we can bring forward in the future, or?
So, we're about to go, obviously, if you.
I'm sorry to blindside you.
No, no, you're not, hang on, me, it's fine.
But I thought, because we're getting calls, it might be good information.
If you are not currently opted in, you should opt in.
Yes.
Because our rate is lower, right? And we did just get correspondence from our broker and consultant, that they think that we should go back out to bid now, they think we made a very good decision doing such a short contract.
Is this the one that we, we've already, if you've done it, this isn't new, this is one from before?
Yeah, this is the same one, nothing's changed. It's just that people, people opted out, right? And all of a sudden, they're like.
Haven't opted back in.
And then they, if they didn't opt back in, they're like, oh, I should have done that, so we're helping them process right now, so we'll be going back out to bid again soon, sounded like, based on her emails, so we'll know again in the fall, late fall, I think we expire in October, what the next rate will be, but right now, it's a favorable rate, which is great.
And your bill should say, it's a national grid bill, but it should say your suppliers direct energy.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And that's how you know.
And that's, yes.
That's how you know if you're opting in.
Alternative supplier.
Yeah.
And it actually says something about the North Andover aggregate program, I think. I don't, so, on the back, but if you have questions, we can help.
I'm listening to Jillian on the phone. She's so good, she's very good, she's very patient, answered a lot of questions, so all of that is good.
And I will say that in quarter, so in quarter four.
And hopefully she hears this when she's doing the.
She will.
Thank you, Jillian.
She's so good. In quarter four, you know, as we, we all know that quarter three of '22, we did, was when we had loss, but in quarter four of '22, there's $212,000 in savings for the community, so we are, we have turned it around, which is good news.
Yeah, it's great.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, are, any other select board updates or comments?
So, just a quick update on 400 Gate Pond Road, so based on, you know, our approval in our last meeting, or the meeting before, to use APPA funding, so we have gone, created a draft for a request for qualifications for engineering firms to come back to, that we can then, you know, look forward to, or look to hire, to do the work, to actually do the analysis on the building and determine, you know, what is our best options with that building, so that will, we're going to be reviewing those at a meeting tomorrow night, we'll be reviewing those as a team tomorrow night, both Steve Foster and Jim Stanford have been working to put that together, so they've got that draft together, and we should be, again, we'll review it tomorrow night, and we'll take it from there, but we did talk about putting a presentation together, and I think we've nominated Melissa as the best person to give that presentation at town meeting on what has been done to date with the Stevens Estate, but I certainly will work with you and tee it up as well, I can give the intro.
That's fine, yeah, just let me know, I'll add it on the list.
She doesn't sleep after tonight, so.
Okay.
She'll just add it to the list.
Actually, so we don't forget.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the town clerk's office and the police department and the poll workers and everybody for a well-run and successful election day.
It feels like it was a really long time ago.
I just checked my calendar, I was like, was it really two weeks ago?
It was a long time.
But, yeah.
As usual.
Another successful election, yeah.
Our town clerk is very friendly and.
Oh, she doesn't laugh, she just, she's a gentleman.
Like, to keep your smile on your face that whole day, we're so lucky to have her.
Yeah, but people like it because there's so many familiar faces behind the tables, that it's like old homie.
It is, it's absolutely social hour.
So that it's, it's really, it's, it's great.
So, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, April 19, at 7:00 p.m., and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second and a third and a fourth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.